Good evening. This regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission is now in session. It's Thursday, January the 5th, 2023, 6:00 PM. And this meeting is being conducted in the Carabelle City Hall chambers. We'll open with a prayer by Commissioner Melander, and then I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening on our first meeting of the year 2023. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us as individuals and as a city. And I ask that you put your guiding hand upon us here on the council tonight and help us and direct us in a favorable manner to conduct our business for the welfare of the city in Carabelle. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year to everyone and welcome. Thank you for silenting your phones. And as I usually say, if you would like to speak during public comment or during the discussion portion of an agenda item, please complete a speaker card and submit it to our city clerk, Ms. Keisha. Comments are kept at three minutes with a one-time visit to the podium per item. And a loud outburst will not be tolerated from your seats. So you must come to the podium to speak and just, you know, let us know. We'll move right on to the consent agenda. Do we have a, has everyone had a chance to review the three sets of minutes and the attorney's invoices? And would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right. And that motion is by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Melander. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay. This is the public comment portion of the meeting. So if someone here would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, is there anyone out there that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? All right, then we'll move forward. Okay, we have the commissioners' reports of this evening. Commissioner Walden, do you have anything?
I have a couple of things.
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
I have a couple of things. I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I wanted to remind our business owners to update your sales tax to seven and a half percent. The new half percent school capital outlay surtax program began January 1st, and I just remembered to do it today. Also, right before this meeting, a county resident contacted me after speaking with our city administrator about getting city water. He expressed his appreciation of her quick and efficient work and specifically said she's always so pleasant and willing to talk to him and wanted the commission to note. So thank you, Courtney, for being an asset to our city.
Amen.
And I'm looking forward to another great year working for the citizens of Carabelle. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. And then Commissioner Melander, do you have?
I have none tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Brown? Excuse me, Commissioner Gray?
Wrong color.
Okay. All right. And I'm glad you're here and Happy New Year again. So I just want to give a big shout out and thank you and a job well done to those on the water side of the Water and Sewer Department who worked over the freezing Christmas weekend. The water system underwent significant challenges during the prolonged freezing temps, especially with everyone having to leave their water faucets dripping. And then we had several burst pipes here and there. So, you know, there was a demand on the water supply, but our dedicated workforce was out there and kept that supply going for us. And despite it all, water service was not interrupted, although it was unfortunate that for those who did have to endure the burst pipes. And because of that, we're tossing around some ways to inform folks that they should, you know, really be diligent in turning their water off if they're going out of town, you know, like that, even just for a couple of days, turn your water off. And for those who have, are second homeowners, you know, be sure to turn your water off because you just never know what might happen inside your home. Or, you know, anything could even happen to an outside water faucet. Then I want to send a thank you to Dustin Putnall. He's brought the new streets and roads Kubota tractor out there with his new attachments up here at City Hall for everyone to see. And Ms. Courtney is going to tell, give you the details on that under her report. Then I want to mention too that in mid-December, Courtney and I met with two Northwest Florida Water Management Directors. I had lunch with them and a local citizen, Chester Butler, and we discussed the Sun's project, which we've mentioned here briefly before, a stormwater management project. And that, this project back here that we discussed earlier a few months ago, back here on Gray Avenue, that is back on their radar and is back on their project list. But our discussions, we had, we ended up having almost a three-hour meeting here with them. We had, it was a very pleasant meeting, very productive meeting, and we turned our talks towards recycling and that we needed reuse water and that we needed more reuse water. And that worked out into a discussion where we may be able to submit an application for what they term alternate water supply. And I know you've been informed about it as well. And there's a, Russell will tell us more about that under his report. But that was a very productive meeting, and we made some good friends at the Water Management District that day. So that's all I have right now, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is staff reports. And we have the city attorney.
All right. I just have one item. We have, the city is engaged in a lawsuit, 22 CA 22 Circuit Court. At this point, the city, we did refer to insurance, it got declined, it wasn't unexpected. It's not the type of suit that insurance typically covers. And at this point, the case is moving forward, and the city's been ordered to respond to the complaint. It was amended, and they've been ordered to respond. The nature of the case, I've been involved in them before, but what I wanted to ask the commission for was authorization to retain special counsel to assist. So I'll be taking the lead, I'll be doing the line share of the work, but to basically provide me with a resource I can reach out to and get assistance in the case as needed. And what I'd ask for is a budget not to exceed $6,000. They bill like $300 an hour. So I figure about 20 hours should suffice, that I can reach out from time to time during the case. If it's less than that, great. But if the case wraps up early, which again, I hope it will, but you never know until it's court.
And would you like a motion for that?
Yes, just a motion authorizing me, all retained through my law firm, but with obviously the approval of the city.
Funding for special counsel not to exceed $6,000?
$6,000. And certainly any questions, I'm happy to answer. I'll keep the commission updated on, there's really nothing to report yet. It's related to the Family Dollar matter, there's some public records requests that the folks making the request, the company making the request is claiming that they did not receive the records that they asked for. It's literally that simple. And of course, our position is the id. And now it's in court, and we'll see how it pans out.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the attorney's request in the amount up to $6,000. And I'm gonna tell you what, Mr. Attorney, don't spend it on.
I'll try not to.
Anyway, I'm joking with the motion, but I'm gonna make the motion to approve the attorney's request in the amount of $6,000. That's me.
And we have that motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any further discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And anything else, Mr. Hartman?
Nothing else from me.
Okay. The CRA plan, I know we had discussed a special meeting. Would you like to call for that? Tell us about that, and we'll vote for that under your.
Yes. So CRA, I did send an email to Keisha on the process. We sent out the advertisement, as we're supposed to, and notifying the commission of, or I'm sorry, notifying the public of a special meeting that will occur, did we?
January 17th.
January 17th, at 1:00, so a half hour before the CRA meeting, at which point people can come forward with any input they have on just, they're all text amendments, just to really update the CRA plan. So there's nothing controversial there. We have approved it at the CRA already, and this is one of the statutory things, we just need to check it off, and then we can adopt it by resolution at the February commission meeting. I'll prepare the resolution.
Do we need a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting for the CRA.
Okay. And that's at January 17th at 1:00 PM. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And that motion then, Keisha, is by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hartman? Okay, then we'll move on to our city administrator, Ms. Courtney.
Did everybody receive their department reports? Do you have any questions? As the mayor mentioned, we have our new street and road piece of equipment out front, and it is a new Kubota tractor. This tractor came with a lot of attachments. We have a front end loader, a pool top mower, front mount mower, a root rake, and it was a total of $72,775 for everything. What we didn't get is a trailer to pull it on. And we do have some areas that are outside the city proper that are in, still in the city limits that we need to work on, the McKissick Beach Drive or the Lighthouse Drive. So I've asked Dustin to get me a price, and let's just see what it comes in at, so then we can haul it over the bridge and do roadwork. We have a lot of property that's outside, is over the bridge, that's inside the city limits that we still need to maintain. So he'll be getting that, and I'll keep it with you guys, and we'll see where it comes, where we can find some funding for it.
Just one comment. I'd like to mention for the benefit of the public, because I heard some outside about not having a trailer. The tractor is legally roadworthy, but we just don't necessarily want to haul it that far. It is road equipped with all the proper safety equipment, locks, et cetera, so it is roadworthy. We can move it as an agricultural piece of equipment on the road.
He does have his dump trailer he used to bring it here, but it's not really suited for the tractor. But he can use it if he, like, he used it to bring it here tonight, but, you know, we need to get something that's more suited for the tractor.
And I'll just make a comment here too, so the public understands that it was funded by the American Rescue Plan funding that came down to all the cities in the United States and counties through the federal government. And I believe that that came under our budget for the, so we could probably just use out of our budget an American Rescue Plan.
It was under budget, if I'm correct.
And also to note, in that particular situation, Dustin, which is the road and street superintendent, is gonna need that new vehicle that's heavier duty, that's capable of pulling.
Yes. It has been ordered.
That's correct.
I just wanted to let you guys know that the McKissick Beach Dune Rockover is complete.
It's fine.
It also came in way under budget. So we have went back and asked the TDC to fund a multimodal map and some signage. So we've submitted that request to Mr. Solomon with the TDC, and we're just waiting to hear back from them. We're still, we are interviewing the streets and roads position. We did some interviews today. I think Dustin's got some set for Monday, but we're still working on that. The animal abandonment signs have been installed around the ponds, the two ponds. The downtown parking signage, he was in yesterday and got a copy of the map, and where each signs need to go. So if he didn't start that today, it shouldn't happen either end of this week, first of next week, but he has all his brackets to mount them into the concrete, and so that should be, like I said, today, tomorrow, Monday sometime soon. We need to advertise for sure, two P&amp;Z members and one CRA member. The P&amp;Z members can, they have to be live inside the city limits, but they can be anywhere inside the city limits. The CRA member has to be either live or own a business in the CRA district. They have to have some sort of CRA business in the district. So if I could ask that you guys let me advertise for those two positions.
I think that's fine. You just direct Courtney to advertise.
And then we would appoint you February or March. I know the last time we opened up the CRA position, I had a lot of people interested that weren't qualified for the CRA, but some of them, people may be interested in planning an zoning, because there's two openings, a plan in zoning and one in the CRA. And then also permission to advertise for a CRA district maintenance and landscape employee. This would also be a CRA employee.
That's fine.
I'll deal with that.
All right. Okay, cool. Hit me with that.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. I just also want to follow up on the McKissick Beach Dune crossover. That was funded by the Terrace Development Council Infrastructure Grant that they're not only providing for the county, but they're allowing both cities in the county to use this infrastructure money that they have budgeted, and we're really glad about that. This is the first time in a long time that the TDC has shared funds with either, in both cities. So we're just real glad that that's happening, and we want to keep up a good partnership with the TDC as well. So.
I'd just like to comment to Courtney. Courtney, that's really, to me, as a commissioner, that's a good way to start off a new year meeting. I hear a lot of progress in your report tonight. Things are happening, things positive, things are happening. And you and staff and employees are making that. So that was really a good report. Sounds good. Thank you for your hard work, all of you.
All right. Anything else for Ms. Courtney? Okay. Then we'll move on to city clerk. All right, get your calendars out. I've got some dates for you. January 16th, City Hall will be closed for Martin Luther King Day. January 17th, as you just heard, we'll have a special public hearing at 1:00 PM for this amended CRA plan. Same day, January 17th, will be the CRA meeting at 1:30. Excuse me. January 19th is our scheduled P&amp;Z meeting. As of now, I don't have anything for it, but it is scheduled. And then, of course, our next city commission meeting will be Thursday, February 2nd at 6:00 PM. Do you all have any questions for Keisha? All right then, we'll move on to Russell's report, then, if you know him, Mr. Russell Large.
First item, this is not on the memo, but regarding the West Water Treatment Plant permit renewal, we did submit responses back to the EP on that, so they're reviewing those responses. We are working to close out the current Small Communities grant with DOT, and then for the Baywood project, I had an exhibit, I'll ask Courtney to pull that up, but we did discuss this project with the grant administrator in some detail, especially regarding the budget. And she indicated to me that the budget, as it currently stood at 1.7 million, was too high for the project to really be competitive. So she recommended that we break the project up into phases, and we can submit all of the phases as separate applications in this current cycle. So the exhibit you see here before you would address the most egregious flooding issues there. The one, the blue that you see is a cross drain to alleviate the flooding, and the red would be an increase in the roadway profile. So we estimate that those two areas in red plus the cross drain would be about $600,000. So for the first phase, that's what we would propose that we submit as the funding application. And then the balance of the work, we would submit as additional phases. So, any questions on that?
Hopefully we get this done.
Yeah.
If this is what they're recommending, I believe that we should go along with what they're recommending. You know, of course, everyone out there and all of us here want the whole thing paved. It needs to be paved desperately. It's full of potholes, but I'm sure they would be glad to get the flooding taken care of, so that they don't have to ride across a whitewater to get to it from work in school. So I think we should move forward.
I'm sitting here thinking, and I would love to see the project done in its entirety, because I look at it from a operational standpoint, be much cheaper to do it.
True.
In its entirety. However, if we, the grant funding is, if we have to get it piecemeal, we have to get it piecemeal. And I'm of the same opinion, give what we can give. Okay?
Okay. So let's have a motion to direct Russell then to just revise his application?
Yes.
Okay. Your FDOT SCOP application, as you have recommended here.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make that motion. I'll make the motion to direct Russell to submit your revised FDOT SCOP application as you have recommended.
I'll second that.
We have that motion by La Paz, second by Brown. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. All right.
Okay, thank you. On our Lighthouse project, testing is continuing this week and next week. And then I'll move to the Summer Camp Water and Sewer Project. We did, we met with staff and the attorney to develop language for a potential agreement. We also followed up with Bridget Presice at St. Joe, and they are indeed still interested in pursuing an agreement with the city of Carabelle. We discussed the concept of a development agreement. She's familiar with those. Apparently, they've done this with some other communities. So at this point, we are prepared to provide an outline of the agreement, which Mr. Hartman would prepare and get that back in front of her for review and comment. Okay, we also mentioned Landmark West, that's the Water Management District project. There is a grant deadline of 22 February for supplemental, so that would be for the sewer portion of work within the Landmark West area. So we would prepare that application. That's what you were referring to up here.
And that would be a septic-to-sewer project.
Yes.
A lot of folks don't understand or know that the west side of Landmark is still unseptic.
And wells.
And so, but what that, I beg pardon, and wells, yes, wells. And then what that would do is help us produce more reuse water.
Right. Which is the point of the grant, that's right.
Right, as an alternate water supply is reuse water.
Right.
Okay.
Lastly, there were two task orders we discussed at the last meeting, one for the Ryan Drive Drainage Improvements, and the other for the Avenue C overflow boat parking. So I'll just bring those up for the board's pleasure.
And last month, at last month's meeting, we received these two task orders for, as Russell just mentioned, but it was a very short notice. We all didn't have time to review the task orders. I hope now, we've had five weeks, I hope we've had time to review these task orders. And then we did say at December's meeting that we would vote on that here now to accept those task orders or not. So Russell has first the Ryan Drive Drainage Improvements, and we had discussed that we would need funding for this project, a funding source. And we did set aside a budget for stormwater improvements in the city limits and our American Rescue Plan funding. So we've got a proposal here for engineering services at $13,200. So I suppose we could, you know, move forward with that if the board would like to do that. And we're aware of the location now on the Ryan Drive Drainage Improvements that are needed.
I'll make a motion to approve task order on Ryan Drive.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, and that's a motion by Commissioner Melander and a second by Commissioner Gray. Is there any further discussion? And that is for, to accept a proposal for engineering services for Ryan Drive Drainage Improvements funded by the American Rescue Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And so then the next one would be the Southeast Avenue C overflow boat ramp parking lot. Russell did bring to us a drawing that we have reviewed, and the proposal for engineering services is $14,800. And this would be funded out of the boat ramp fees that we collect. We have a boat ramp fee account, and that's how it would be funded. So would we like to accept that proposal for this task order?
I would go through.
Okay. We have that motion by Commissioner Melander.
And I'll second.
And second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right then. Okay.
All right, thank you, and that completes our report.
All right, and thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Russell at this time? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate your detailed report.
I'm, let me get on this, that, who made that motion?
This last one was Commissioner Melander and Brown. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to our advisory board reports, and we have the Carabelle Water Park Partnership. Do you have anything, Ms. Tamra?
I can't be tall enough to do this. Is that good? Can you hear me now? Well, it's Happy New Year. It's nice to see you all. I just have a couple of things. One, I wanted, in my report, we talked about the fact that the state finally approved us keeping part of the shipwrecks that were removed from Dog Island, and there was a lot of, it's been about a year. It's taken us almost a year to get permission to keep those parts that we actually have on display, so we're very. So we're very thrilled. They finally came and did a site visit, and they said they were very pleased about what we had. And they're actually talking about giving us back the one that got, the one that Brenda saved from the McKissie Beach. And it actually has gone through the process of being state-ized. So we're still hoping to get that as well. So that was really exciting. But mostly, I'm here to tell you that on the 21st of this month, there's going to be, we're going to have a history talk like we do in January. And it's going to be Dale Cox, who has written so many books about the South and this part of Florida. And he has written a book about the Battle of Natural Bridge, which was, as you all probably know, the Civil War battle where the Union attempted to take the capital of Tallahassee at the very end of the war. It's one of the larger and more notable battles that happened in the state of Florida. And there's quite a lot of information about it. And that we have a book at the museum if you want to read up on it before the talk. But Dale's a great speaker, so it'll be a couple hours worth enjoying. It's at Sea Quarters Marina on Saturday, January the 21st, and at 10 o'clock. So we also have state employees who work at that park are going to be there also to talk with people about what they have to share. So they're pretty excited. And then the other thing that I need to talk to you about tonight was culture crawl. And normally, the Caribou History Museum is the sponsor of the Caribou Culture Crawl. I think this is our sixth annual. It's going to be in February this year on the 11th, and just a little earlier than we're, we're going to issue lots of codes for this thing. But I think it'll work out really fine. But we were asking for permission to close the street. Or just the morning of the event, we would close at about 8:00 in the morning. And we start at 10:00, and then we would be done by 5:00. So it'd just be
Avenue B.
Just Avenue B from Paul Marks' driveway up to the stop sign by Marina Street. So we wouldn't be closing anything on Marina Street, but we would have something in the center of the road there to keep people from, on both ends, to keep people from coming up and down. So this is the little festival we do, which we, we honor history, culture, and art in Caribou. And we have characters, and we have people painting, we have authors signing their books. And it's usually fun, nothing as large as bigger festivals, but it is fun.
So let's have a motion then to close Avenue B on February the 11th for the culture crawl.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have Brown and Walden. Okay, is there any, any discussion on this item? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Tamra, I wanted to ask you about the historical marker. How is that coming along, the application?
Well, it's, we've got the papers filled out and we're working with the guy at the state for the historical marker for the justice building
Yes, ma'am.
in the whole city hall. Yes, we've got that. It's, it's on the top of our list.
And this too will be funded by the TDC.
Yes.
Yes, and I'm telling you, it takes, it took years of work to get the TDC to come around to
Yes.
fund any type of historical signage or, you know, anything for the cities. So we just have to keep at it over there.
It all takes way too long. But, but you know, that's one thing, you have to be patient.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, and then the aviation advisory board, do we have, do you have anything that you needed to speak out?
I don't answer any questions here.
Okay, so everyone, y'all got your report then from the advisory board? Do we have any questions regarding that?
No.
Okay, all right, very good, and thank you. And I just want to say, point out one thing. You did get your impact statement here on the, on what the airport, its economic impact to the community here, which is 3.2 million. The last time that the impact study was done for the Caribou Airport was back, they used 216, 2016 numbers, is that correct, or?
That was, I believe it was 2015 or 2016.
Okay. And then that report came out in 2019, and at that time, the airport had only a $666,000 economic impact. And now it's, it's up to 3.2 million. And that's a very good increase and significance on the local community. And I appreciate the work of all the volunteers, and especially those that have put in year after year volunteering service out there. Thank you. Okay, and thank you also for shutting down the water. Mr. Sullivan, he went out there and shut all the water off before the cold freezing weather started. So thank you so much. All right. Let me see where I am here. Okay, the Crooked River Lighthouse Association, Mr. Steve Allen.
I asked for 10 minutes, and she gave me eight.
I didn't hear 10. I just said eight.
It was a joke.
Time's starting.
I asked for 10 minutes, I get eight.
Oh, I see. Sorry. He only has eight.
Oh.
So, so I've got a couple of things I wanted to go over, just a little report. Since I have eight minutes, I'm going to move pretty quickly through the report. But pirate ship, we got a, I'm going to talk about the Florida Lighthouse Association visit on the 3rd of November, and the Crooked River Park Fest on the 4th of November, and then the museum infrastructure grant, grant that you received.
November?
November?
Not November.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say, no, it is in February.
Oh. That's pretty advanced notice.
Yeah. I didn't even, I could use a minute a month for that. Here's a picture of the boat on November, as for my November came, November 19, 31 days after two masts set on the property. And it was used as the, as the stage for the Crooked River Lighthouse Fest. And we had a rainy event, but it was fun and successful. And so a lot of work got done in a period of a month, a month, including the retaining walls, all the frames, the ground, the decking, and all the place for that event. Next slide. So 90% of the prefabricated frame parts are on the ship at this point, kept skeletons there. I put more than 1,000 lug nuts, bolts, and screws, and decking screws. Either Scooby is eating them, or it took a lot more than I anticipated. But it seems like every day I'm going to Ace Hardware and buying screws. Next slide. Here's my steps. The stringers arrived yesterday. I love the metal stringers, look great on the boat. It will allow the, the parents to watch the kids ascend and descend and engage with the different features of the boat when it gets completed. So now, that's, see, that was quick on the boat. So now we have the Florida Winter Meeting. The Florida Lighthouse Association is funded by three grants. When you buy a tag in the state of Florida that has a lighthouse on it, that money comes into a fund. And in the next, including this year and next year, the Florida Lighthouse Meeting has, Florida Lighthouse Association has funded over $50,000 worth of work at the Crooked River Lighthouse. So they're coming on the February the 3rd at, for their winter meeting. And so all of the Florida Lighthouse Association members from across the state may be attending up to 50 to 75. They're having a dinner and a meeting at the Crooked River Grill. And then they picked that date because we were already having a, next slide, we were already having a country market and a Full Moon climb lined up on the first on that same day. And so they were excited about the country market. And of course, we've been working on the lens project, which they funded. So we sort of combined those together for a Country River Park Fest, I mean, a Crooked River Park Fest. It'll include the country market, the Fresnel lens exhibit grand opening, and a Full Moon climb. So, next slide. The Extended Country Market is from 9:00 to 3:00, and we invited additional vendors from what is usually there. But the market is really kind of a stable, every two-week event, we have sort of a base set of marketer or vendors and public attending and buying and purchasing, mostly consuming goods like tomatoes and donuts and so, and things like that. If you're interested in being a vendor, you go to the Caribou Lighthouse, crookedriverlighthouse.com website, program and events, and there's a link to, to register. So then the, so on the 4th, that Saturday, from 9:00 to 3:00, we're going to have this Extended Country Market. Then all of the country market people are going to close their booth down and drive off. And then we're going to have the opening of the Fourth Order Lens Project at the lighthouse in the new room. It's been a new case that's been created. It is going to be put on a table with a motor in it, and it will be pivoting or rotating with a light in it. Not many exhibits exist that have that combination. The reason it does is because the Fresnel lens is a bi-valve, it's open on one side. So the original burners are able to be seen when mounted inside of the lens. That's a very rare situation. Most of them are enclosed. And so the being able to rotate it around and let everyone see all the sides is going to be fantastic. It's going to, and we have interpretive signage and so forth. So the Chamber of Commerce is working with us. We're going to do a ribbon cutting for that room, that project. I would make a special invitation to you all to join us for that event. It really is wonderful that they've chosen our wonderful lighthouse to come and visit. I just received announcement and invitation to the event on Friday night. It listed everything in Franklin County, specifically Caribou, in terms of things for these people to see when they're here visiting. And they have worked with us over the last several years to fund two major projects. One is the restoration of the tower that's going to begin next year. And one of them is this lens room with this case and the motor and the replica of the burner. It's amazing. It's going to be spectacular, and we really want to make a good impression on them. So we will be inviting city county commissioners, TDC boards, imported people from across the county, and some of the state legislators as well, and we'll see how that works. So you'll get an invite, and the invite will also have, so directly following the ribbon cutting, at 6:00 is going to be at our Full Moon climb. So we have Tom Mason, who's an international pirate entertainer. He's booked the week before at the St. Augustine Pirate Festival. He's going to come over and entertain us along with the TCC dancers, who are a lantern fest regular. It is a fundraiser. Tickets are available starting at $15. There are packages that go up at $75. And if you can attend, there's a little place in there that you can make a donation to the ship project and the state project there as well. So please attend, and I'll be sending out to each of you invitation with a link to all the imported matters. Okay, so then, that's, that's all on Saturday, on, on that Saturday. We hope to maybe have a Crooked River Festival too next year. So this is an opportunity for us to establish sort of an event over there, and we're going to see what we can put together by taking what we have and sort of pushing it up a little bit. So I gave you a little package of six documents. It's a, it's a grant that I submitted. As the mayor mentioned, the TDC is, and the county is now offering infrastructure grants to the five museums in the county, and they're $25,000 apiece. And last year, last fiscal year, we spent $20,000 on a brand-new fence. And I think I have a picture of it, but hold on before you go to the picture. So it's up to 25 a year. It's a reimbursement grant, meaning when we submit the grant, they approve it. When we expend the money, they then reimburse us for it. And it's, it's been for established museums only, so it's not a museum you have to have been a museum for a couple of years. Funds are derived from the vet tax. If it's under $10,000, it's a one bid project proposal. If it's over $10,000, you have to have three bids. So the next slide. This was our fence, sorry for the pictures. On the left is a combination chain link wood privacy fence that was really, really unsightly. And we sort of let it be overgrown in front of it because the overgrowth looked better than the fence itself. And we had a failed air conditioner. And so we were able to replace the air conditioner and get that beautiful new fence put in. It really serves as a backdrop of the whole property in terms of noise. And so we were able to successfully finish that project, get those payments made through the generosity and support of you guys by supporting, you gave us the financing. We have, we had a memorandum of understanding or a contract with the city. We fronted the money essentially. We used the money to accomplish the grant. When it was done, they, the TDC sent us a check because we're the applicant, and then we returned the money to the city. So I submitted this week an application for a new infrastructure grant in this fiscal year, and hopefully, we'll have this by February 4th. But a sound system for the park, and it will be permanently mounted inside the boat. We'll be able to run it from the gift shop. So when the ladies are working and people are visiting, we can have a little like park music on on a daily basis. People spend more money and have a better experience when there's a little background music. Amazing how much different costumes on people's faces. And then also, we'll be able to do, like when we do lantern fests, we have to hire a technician to come out and do sound and bring all their equipment. All of that will be in place. There will be opportunities for gospel concerts, I hope maybe come up soon, I'm going to work on that, or weddings, or music events like we're already doing. And so even when we have a country market and can't afford a band, we can at least play some jams while we're doing it. So I put that submission in, and what I'm here tonight to do finally is request the same support that y'all gave in the, in the last round, which would be to allow me to sign a contract to extend a loan to us to accomplish the project, and then we would reimburse you. Any questions? How many minutes was that?
I don't know. I was busy writing the motion.
All right.
And since, you know, I didn't know this in advance, that you wanted to do this, but it's fine. I think it's good. And I, I think a motion, we did this once before, and we've already got an agreement drawn up. Mr. Hartman drew up an agreement when we did a reimbursement agreement with the Crooked, the Caribou Lighthouse Association. And, and that has already been paid back for the fencing.
It has been paid back, and the project went quickly, and there was no holdup, so it went well.
And so I, I'll go ahead and, since I wrote the motion, I'll just go ahead and say it, that if the project is approved by the TDC, I would motion to fund the Lighthouse Park sound system, for the city to fund the Lighthouse Park sound system through the reimbursement agreement that we used with the Caribou Lighthouse Association in the past.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. Is that, is that sufficient for you? Okay.
Thank you so much.
So wait, now we haven't voted.
I'm sorry.
So is there any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? I will say this, once again, this is another TDC-funded project, and it takes perseverance over there. This is a brand-new grant program, and
We really wanted to spend all of the money so they keep giving.
These things take work behind the scenes to get this, to get these grant programs. It takes work behind the scenes.
And when, and when we use it, they are more likely to continue offering it.
Yes.
And that's critically important, and they might even increase it. We could really benefit from about five years of a really heavy grant like this to catch up on some of the things that we should have been or could have been doing in the last.
And that, and, you know, I sit on the TDC, and actually, all the museums, you know, good, really, you know, the Rainy House in Appalachia really needs assistance, and our museum here needs assistance. So we, we need to, you know, try to keep this thing moving so that we can justify keeping that line item budgeted each year.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so that motion is by myself and second by Commissioner Brown. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you so much. Our calendar is February the 4th.
Okay, thank you. And look, y'all, if you haven't seen that Fresnel, even though it's not spelled that way, and I learned how to, from Mr. Royce's video, I learned how to say that. Fresnel lens, it is beautiful. It is like a big jewel. It is so beautiful and precious. So if you get a chance, go buy it. And there was a beautiful picture of it in the Appalachia Cola Times. And there was a beautiful picture of it in the Appalachia Cola Times. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on now to the public hearing for the second reading of ordinance four eighty-seven, our golf cart ordinance, and I'll ask the city attorney to read the ordinance title.
All right. This is ordinance, this is second reading, so adoption time on ordinance number four eighty-seven. It's an ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Caravela, Florida authorizing operation of golf carts on certain city streets located in the city, prescribing standards for equipment required on golf carts operating on streets located in the city, requiring the posting of signs pertaining to where golf carts may be operated, providing for enforcement, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay, and I just want to say here that back on December the fifteenth, we had our first public reading of this ordinance, and this commission allowed my request to review ordinance four eight seven paragraph by paragraph. And then many times, we reviewed it line by line, and we took about an hour and a half to review it in full detail. All the questions from this board were answered. All questions from the public in attendance at that time were answered. And I see a few of those same people are still here. Thank you for coming back. And so I would ask now, are there any further questions regarding this ordinance by the by the commissioners? Any further questions or comments? Okay, go ahead.
I don't have any further question that has not already been answered. I feel that we need to go forward, and I plan to go forward with what we're going to do tonight by direction from our attorney of what's legal, by state law. I'm still not, from where I sit, comfortable with some of the answers that we had to resolve to. And I won't get into detail, but I just wanted to make that comment, that I'm still unsettled with some of those decisions that we're having to make based upon state law. And I'll leave it at that. There's more explanation, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
Sorry, if I may add, because I have I've had discussion with all of you individually as well as at the meetings, and I understand that concern. I share it because this is more uncertain than it has than it should be, based on Attorney General's opinions, statute, everything, and we're moving quick. But something that was mentioned at the last meeting that, again, we don't have to deal with right now, but you had talked about authorizing me to go back to the Attorney General in a formal fashion, just and again, not to slow this down, but where we could amend this if we get kind of more clarity or direction from the Attorney General and or from any other agency that we've reached out to that we're not we're not getting. But after this is done, if you want to direct me on that, or I can bring to you the issues as I see them, and you can say, yep, go and get clarity on those, basically ask for an Attorney General opinion on those in formal or informal. I can do that.
And I think that's well said by our attorney. That reflects my statements that were just made, and I was going around the ball making those statements because I'd made some of those specific statements at meetings prior to this of my some of my concerns. And anyway, I'm not going to stall, and I don't plan to stall what we're doing tonight. But I just wanted to make that statement to follow up on some of the questions and concerns I had in meetings prior to this. Well put, Mr. Attorney.
And I'll go ahead and say, since we're discussing this this particular part of the of this process, that I do believe this commission should move forward with, not to stall. I don't want to stall the the process here either, but we should move forward and reach out to the Attorney General to discover, you know, why and how a twenty-year-old Attorney General opinion can disallow, as it says in the statute, a responsible government entity from making the statute more strict. You know, we're understanding, we have a better knowledge of the speed and the volume and the type of traffic on certain roadways. And, you know, I believe we need to to know if there's a way that us, being the responsible government entity, can can possibly raise the age and require a driver's license and/or for those that are operating a golf cart. And so that's that's just my comment that I had planned to have during discussion, but I've gone ahead and made that now. So are there any other questions or comments at this time from the from the board?
Someone make a motion to approve?
I have a question to to the city attorney. And I want to ask the the audience also if they have any questions.
That's fine. I thought you wanted a motion for discussion.
Not not at this time, but but thank you. I have a question to the city attorney. So in the ordinance, it says that the responsible government entity shall post appropriate signs to indicate that such that the golf cart operation is allowed. And it says, upon determination that golf carts may be safely operated on a street or road, the governmental agencies shall post appropriate signs. So I want to know, when and how will this ordinance become effective? Will signs have to be placed on designated streets and roads before the legal operation is allowed? How would this work?
Okay, so I just, I know we discussed this prior, so I should be, I just had a thought was, number one, this ordinance states it becomes effective upon adoption. So it would be effective tonight after the vote. However, the ordinance also says, obviously, it's the document that requires the city to put up the signs. And something that this literally just occurred to me is, in the statute, I don't want to get this wrong, in the statute, it may be that the signs, I think it talks about the signs being a condition that has to exist before you can operate the golf cart on on the road, right? And the concern was that upon adoption here today and signature, that people could, they had lights on their golf cart, they could be driving them out on Ryan Drive tonight, right, after the meeting. If you, I hate to ask you to give me a moment, but let me quickly look at that section of the statute again, as to whether or not the city has to install those signs before, even though we adopt this, if those signs need to be up before people can can drive. And I think that's the case, but I can verify it really quickly here.
Well, go ahead.
Russell may have a thought.
All right. And I had something else I wanted to say, and I believe Commissioner Melander does too, and I want to hear from the other commissioners if they have anything to say as well. Go ahead, Mr. Russell.
Well, thank you. And I read through the statute real quick, and I'll defer to Dan's determination on the language here, but and this may be, this may not be the correct context, but I did find a statement that says the local government entity shall post appropriate signs or otherwise inform the residents that such an ordinance exists. But I don't know if that's the proper context, so.
That's kind of what I meant to say.
All right. And look, I want to tell the public here now, I am I am extremely pleased that the city will shortly have a golf cart ordinance. It's been a long time needed, is very much needed, and I'm happy that the board and the staff and the chief and the police department, they, you know, have all been able to work together on this and develop an ordinance. But as I told you at the December meeting, I'll be voting no, and the mayor does not have veto power, so don't worry. And I'll be voting no because there's no Attorney General opinion stating that golf carts must be allowed to operate on roads with a speed limit up to thirty-five miles per hour or less. And there's no Attorney General opinion stating that golf carts must be allowed to operate on roads any time of the day or night, basically twenty-four hours a day. So but otherwise, I I'm happy that we're developing an ordinance, but I feel so strongly about these these two items, putting golf carts at thirty-five mile an hour at night, in a dark night, you know, that that I'll be voting no. And hopefully, we can go to and and reach out to the Attorney General and find out what we what we can and cannot do, and come back and revise this ordinance where I'll be glad to vote yes on. All right. So Commissioner Melander, you had had something you wanted to say, sir?
I have a lot of thoughts, but not at this point.
Okay.
At this point, no.
Okay. Commissioner Gray, anything? Commissioner Walden?
I just want to say that we're doing our best, following the laws of the state of Florida. We're not attorneys. We have Winpey. He's got to go to the Attorney General to give us, we're going to do this, and I agree with you. We could come back and change any of this that the state says that we can do legally.
Right.
I don't want to do nothing here illegally, but we're going to take a step forward, and it doesn't matter. And people got to understand, this is not the way it might be in six months.
Yeah.
We strictly go by the laws of the state of Florida.
And bear in mind, I know that I knew that my vote would not change the outcome. So and Commissioner Brown, did you have any comments?
No, no.
Okay, do we have any comments from the audience, the public in attendance? Yes, Mr. Adlerstein?
One quick question. Has it been decided where the crosswalks are going to be? And what are they?
That has to be applied to through to the FDOT, and we have two locations that Mr. Russell is going to, will, we will, actually, we have an agenda item coming up right after this, where he has to send a letter to the DOT, first, a letter telling about the two locations. And if the Director of Engineering at this district, DOT, approves those two locations, then we can move forward with a detailed analysis of that. It has to be an engineered study, analysis of each location. And you might want to give a better explanation for Mr. Adlerstein, because he may put that in the paper. Go ahead.
Right, so there is, that is a DOT roadways, their facility, and they establish the rule by which they would allow golf cart crossings there, and that procedure is outlined in their Traffic Engineering Manual, Section Five. So we can hold, we can hold that discussion for the agenda item.
Okay.
If you prefer, if you're, that's where the, that's where the rule is found.
My only follow-up is, if this is approved now, there will not be any approved crosswalks until such time as your work is completed.
That's correct.
Until DOT approves.
Yeah, DOT is.
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Hartman.
I can, let me give you my opinion or recommendation on the signage issue. So two two spots in the ordinance, in the statute reference it. The first one is, upon a determination that golf carts may be safely operated on a designated rotor street, the responsible government governmental entity shall post appropriate signs to indicate that such operation is allowed. So I believe that the adoption of this ordinance is the determination that golf carts may be safely operated on the designated rotor street, and that triggers the responsibility of the government to put up those signs. So we just need to move with all haste. It does not, there isn't a, what I was thinking, but it's that's not the case, that until, nothing says that until such signs are posted that a golf cart can operate. So it's just our public determination through the ordinance. Then what Russell had mentioned, again, this statute is something, in eight B, sorry, eight A, the end of it, it talks about, it says, upon enactment of such ordinance, the local government entity shall post appropriate signs or otherwise inform residents that such ordinance exists, and that it will be enforced. So it's sort of an enforcement section, but again, it talks about enactment of the ordinance. So that's what we're doing tonight, so that this does not contemplate signs being up at the time of enactment. So again, staff, we just need to move with haste, and we are publicly announcing at this meeting and public hearing that we're about to pass a golf cart ordinance, that and we certainly discussed it as to streets located in the city.
And signs will have to be up before the golf carts can legally operate, then, is that?
No, that is not what I'm saying. It's just the opposite.
Okay.
That, sorry, that, no, no, that the, because I had, that sort of made sense to me before, but the statute, we got to read the statute strictly, and the statute talks about the city installing signs, and it shall install signs, but after enactment, after adoption, so.
All right, so then golf carts can drive home tonight if they have headlights?
If they have all the proper gear, they can drive home tonight.
Are the drivers at the golf carts?
They shouldn't have driven here, but.
See, I'm glad they had the opportunity to look at that, because they answered most of my questions I was going to hit you with, when you got through research about the promptness and a grace period, if you will, because we can't, it would be the cart before the horse if we install signs before we approve an ordinance.
You can't do that.
Exactly. So anyway, you answered both of my questions, and I'm ready to go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance.
I have asked also, I've asked Russell, because what I need to know is what size signs, do any reflective signs? How many signs do I need? Do I need faceless signs? Do they go every five hundred feet? Do they go, well, we talked about that St. Mark's has a sign when you enter that says you're entering a golf cart community, so I don't know if we just need one as you're entering the city that says Caravela is a golf cart community. So I've asked Russell to look into that. And other than that, I can get the signs pretty quickly. I mean, usually, it takes about a week. We can expedite them, we can have them sooner, but I need to know these.
And I think we need to understand better, too, what is a golf cart community? When St. Mark's has, because there are a golf cart community, they have fifteen miles per hour throughout the entire city, and certainly, we don't have that, you know? So I don't know what makes a golf cart community. I don't know.
I don't think I just got you for that.
And I do have, I did do some research there, and the the best information that I can find is to utilize a manual of a uniform traffic control device sign, that's the nationwide standard for signs, and with the golf cart symbol, and then a placard below the sign that is called a supplemental plaque that says, share the road. You've probably seen that on bicycles, so it would be the same type sign with golf carts. I think that's the most standard form of sign that I think that would that would protect the city. So that's what I would recommend. But and then I think I think we can, we can assist with, you know, where we think the best placement of those signs would be.
You say that's a thirty by thirty, that's a very large sign. That's bigger than a stop sign. And that's what, so you can get different sizes, but that's the standard on the websites of thirty by thirty. You don't even have a stop sign.
That would be good for like the entrance of town, but for on the little streets, that's not a good sign.
Right, right. I don't think it needs to be placed everywhere. I think there's some critical locations, Ryan Drive, for example, I think that would be an important location. And I think we can help develop a plan for for placement of the signs.
Quickly?
Quickly, yes.
And maybe, again, it talks about, in here, it talks about announcing this and making it publicly known. And you could put it on your, on the website.
Advertise it somewhere.
Yeah, anything to get the word out.
Newspaper?
That people should, yeah. That's what they want to do.
It's been in the paper?
Yeah, so people will know that they may encounter golf carts on, certainly on some of these more on these roads.
Well, you made the statement already, Dan, that it's being advertised right now.
It is.
And there's Mr. Adlerstein sitting there, it's going in the paper. So it's being publicly announced, whatever actions we take here right now. So I'll try again to make a motion to approve ordinance number four eighty-seven to be effective immediately.
And I'll second that.
Okay, that motion to approve the city Caravela ordinance four eighty-seven to be effective immediately is made by Commissioner Melander, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I oppose, and so that would be four in favor, Mr. Gray, Mr. Melander, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Walden, and Mr. Gray, Mr. Melander, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Walden, and opposed by Ms. Lopez. And that motion carries, and congratulations. We'll move forward on that. Okay, all right. Looking at someone back there that's getting a new golf cart. All right, we're going to move on to new business. Is that okay with everybody at this board? Okay, so we want to approve or disapprove Anovia Consulting to begin FDOT permitting process for two proposed state highway 98 golf cart crossing locations as outlined in ordinance 487. And would you, for the public, just say where those locations are for, and for Mr. Adlerstein as well?
Tallahassee Street and near the Fourth Street boat ramp.
Tallahassee?
Tallahassee Street?
All of us, sir.
I'm sorry.
Southeast Third Street. Third Street.
Southeast Fourth Street.
Southeast Third Street.
In Third Street.
Third Street.
At the park.
Fourth Street, right.
Is it Third Street or Fourth Street?
It's southeast...
Third.
Southeast Third Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Across from Sands Park.
Across from the...
And northeast. And then northwest, northwest Fourth Street.
At the boat ramp.
At the boat ramp, okay. Those are the two locations you're going to present first. And so, Russell did, in a rush last month, he was able to bring it to us like in a day's notice. He gave us an estimate currently for both crossing locations, somewhere between $9,000 and $10,000. That's for your communicating with the DOT and doing your analysis, and then installation of the required signage.
Right.
Okay, all right. And we'll fund that from the general fund, I believe. So, do we want to, we want to move forward, then, with this? We need a motion to approve or disapprove Anovia to begin working with the FDOT permitting process?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. All right, we have that motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Walden. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. All right, then, we're going to move on to...
Can I just ask a quick question?
Okay.
It is now legal, under the terms of that, to drive a golf cart where it's permissible. There is no permission to cross 98 anywhere.
That's correct.
Done.
And they can't, they cannot ride along 98 either.
That's always been...
Yes.
You don't have...
That's a statement.
And no sidewalks, because they can go on the street now. They can't ride on sidewalks. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Item two, discussion of possible action regarding the additional four hours of paid holiday time benefit for all city employees on Juneteenth holiday. Then I found something on my seat. I believe Miranda was asked to prepare that by one of the commissioners, so I gave it to everybody soon. Okay, so who asked?
I did.
Okay, and can you tell us about...
I asked what it would cost the city to give a half a day compared to a full day, because I personally believe this should be a full day. And it's not a huge difference, but I feel that this is important, and we should give our employees a full day without taking away another holiday.
And that's, you know, I can understand your point of view there, but then this would give our employees 13 and a half days off. And that's significant when you compare it to other governmental agencies.
What were the other governmental agencies paying?
They all varied. Some were, yeah, we were riding around the same as everyone else. Some were less, some were right there where we are. But they all varied.
I don't feel it's significant, but I feel it is significantly important to acknowledge this holiday.
And what was recommended, Mr. Magnin is here, you don't have to get up, sir, but what was recommended from the HR committee?
Well, the two, that the employees would have a half a day off for that holiday initially, and be paid the four hours. And that was, the reasons being that it is a significant holiday for many people. It's a federal holiday now, and probably should be up again for discussion after the next budget is passed, to see if, see if that can go to a, to a full day or stay at a half a day. That pretty much was the recommendation of the committee.
Okay. And I, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And I want to remind the commission that we are, we are really going off on the deep end here with our budget this year. We have, we're about to possibly approve a half day or full day of a holiday that didn't come before us on the budget. We're going to be funding, we funded the fireworks that was not on the budget. We're getting ready to fund signage for golf carts. We don't even know how many signs we need. We're going to be funding the analysis for golf carts, and we just discussed it, $9,000 or $10,000. I mean, we're, we don't normally, in the past, since I've been on this board, we don't, we don't normally just off the cuff, just start approving all kinds of things that, you know, and going away from our budget. And I just want to remind the commission of that. And when we do that, we have to answer to the state. We know we had to answer to the state Legislative Auditing Committee for some budgeting, the way that some budgeting matters were handled in the past. And I'm just, I'm just going to say, I don't want to have to sit before the Senator of this district again and be told that if we don't get ourselves in order, that I will have to appear before the Legislative Auditing Committee. So, I just, you know, want to let you know. I think it's a good suggestion to go with the half day so that it can be recognized this year. And then when we get our budget, start with our budget, we can possibly fund a full day or see what we can do going forward. And that's what I think we should do, and be reasonable and sensible about this. Yes.
Just so the public knows, this paper we have was provided to us by our finance manager. And the difference between a half day and a full day will cost the city about $900 total.
That's fine with me. $900 here, $1,000 there, $10,000 here, you know, whatever y'all want to do.
I have a question.
Okay.
I'm working for the state here with a holiday. You've got that pay off, and you just got your regular pay. It costs the state no more money that day. It's just, I would love that day.
Right, what you lose is productivity.
You lose the productivity, but you don't...
There's no money.
Now, there is catch to this. You have your city water street, and they do have to work on those days.
Yeah.
We'll have to pay them overtime.
Right, and the police.
And the police department. Because other than that, the rest of the employees would be just off that day, we'll pay.
That's what leases, that's what leases.
And that's what, that's the story. So, that's, I, oh, it is a federal holiday now.
Yeah, it is.
So, you saying because we didn't have it in our budget, let's go with four hours this year, and next year we'll put it in our budget for a whole day? Is that what you say?
Well, that's what I'm recommending, because it came from the HR committee like that.
I'll go a long way on that.
Well, I'm going to comment, be spruce. Well, and what I'm trying to say is, is the point that was made. I'm in favor of Juneteenth, and I'm in favor of holidays. Not against the employees getting their fair share of the holidays. Again, the city administrator said, in comparison to some of the other state government entities, county entities, city entities, some are right there in line with us, some are below, et cetera. I kind of like, would like to pump, from my perspective, pump the brakes on it and make a decision of what's reasonable on the number of holidays allowed from our city, from our benefit package within the city. I think we have a really nice benefit package here in the city for the employees. And I think the employees think so as well. But I would kind of like to look at it from that perspective. And in Juneteenth, which is now a federal holiday, which has already been said, has been recognized, and we want to adjust something to make June, recognize the day of Juneteenth a holiday. Maybe we need to do that, but...
Stab.
Hey, again, Keisha, I'm not talking against employees, but that'll put us, as it said...
We don't want to take any other holidays.
That'll put us at like 13 holidays a year versus, I don't know, if the state was 11. I don't know what still, what it is. State of Florida was 11.
When I left, it was 11.
Yeah, so that's, that's pretty significant, what we recognize. And I said this before, when we had discussions about holidays in the past. I remember with the state of Florida, and I'm just sharing info, is when I first started working with the state of Florida, we always got it Christmas, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. During my tenure, 30-year tenure, better than 30-year tenure with the state of Florida, we lost Christmas Eve, and it was moved to Markham with the Kingdom.
That's right.
So, anyway, that's just, that's my comments on it.
You're refreshing, man. You're right, man. I remember now, they did take...
And so, Ms. Keisha, with the half day, how many full, how many days of vacation would that make for the vacation package with the half day? I think it would, that would be 13.
Vacation?
Excuse me, paid holiday.
Oh, holiday, okay, yes, I believe so.
That would be 13 full days. And if you went with the full day for this particular holiday, then that would be 13 and a half days. Just to clarify, right, okay.
So, let me get this from Keisha. You don't want to give up a day...
We do not want to give up a holiday for a floating holiday. So, if you're going to take something, just don't give it to us. I mean, and the whole staff feels that way.
Just leave it like it is.
If you're going to take something, I mean.
Just leave it like it is.
And I mean, if you want to give it, that's fine, but to take something else, not... Okay, Ms. Keisha, is there any other floating holiday? Fourth of July?
There were several. We went over them in the HR committee meeting. They'll fall on a Friday or a Monday, they call them all the week.
Oh, Christmas.
For years.
Certainly not that. Right.
Do most people know what this day is, or why it's a federal holiday?
A lot of people, yes.
What's coming up in June? And we kind of forgot about it last year, and it was brought up, and that's why we're...
Well, you start it.
Well, we need a motion.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
I guess the lawyer. That as a federal holiday, that does not mean cities have to...
As federal employees.
Well, that only applies to federal employees. You're deciding it applies to city employees.
I don't mean it's a federal.
Or you would be.
There were days in prison, we worked on federal holidays. We didn't get all the federal holidays. We got what the state could give us, 11 days.
And then that's on, that's on top of the accumulated vacation. They have a good, they have a good benefits package here.
We do. We're arguing, we're happy with the benefits.
Employees are happy, I'm happy.
Yeah, that's good. But we know they don't want, they don't want to...
We don't want to lose, we don't want to trade one. We'll take one, but we do not want...
They like their Monday, Friday holidays.
Right, we like our long weekends.
To me, that's, that's kind of letting, what Keisha has said is kind of allowing the employees to make the decision for us.
We'll make the motion.
Oh, that's, that's, that's what I'm hearing from the employees.
With every round of commissioners, so it really changes back and forth.
To what?
It changes back and forth with every round of commission, so every time it changes back and forth.
The holidays? How often has it been since?
We've been through, it's been, it hasn't changed recently.
Not since I've been a board.
Yeah, we've been through it before.
Mr. Brown, did it change since?
According to that, that's what I've heard.
So, 11 years, and you took...
Since Commissioner Brown.
Changed them around, so.
Not me.
Jim Brown.
Not this person.
So, does anyone want to entertain a motion?
I'll make it. I'll make a motion. Grant this holiday, because I think they have enough holidays. That's my opinion. We'll go to a third one.
Okay.
I didn't have problems walking today, but pretty well heard they don't want to do that.
Well, the, it was four, the four hours, and then so that's... Okay, so we have the motion right now by Commissioner Walden not to, not to grant this holiday for the, not to grant this holiday. Okay, so that's by Walden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
And I'm with common.
All right.
And I'll second it from the fact that I do agree with Commissioner Brown about... I'm not really excited about half-day holidays, so I do agree with that concept of looking at half-day holidays. I think the employees would be better suited with full-day holidays, but that's just my opinion. But there, on the other hand, I'm looking at what the employees are telling me, that they'd prefer to kind of keep things as is, to give up something else. And we're reaching, in my opinion, that we're reaching a high note, if you will, on honoring holidays. So, that's just my comments, what I'm saying.
Okay, my comment would be that somebody reminded me, and let's, let's talk about this during budget time as well.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion?
I would like to say I do not, correct me if I'm wrong, Keisha. You were not saying that we don't want this holiday. You were saying the employees don't want to trade off to cancel another holiday. Is that correct?
That's, that's what we were saying, yes.
That's what I understood.
Not that we didn't want that, I mean...
That's what I understood.
Because it was multiple employees this past Juneteenth asked why that the city is not recognizing it when it is a state, I mean, it is a federal holiday. And I personally was embarrassed that we weren't, we made no mention of it, just pretended it was not a thing.
Do you know how many days that we worked in, thanks for the clues, because they were federal holidays?
I understand.
State didn't say, well, they got a federal holiday, y'all take it off.
I, I, I have a good rapport with the employees, and not one employee said a word to me about it. Not one employee.
Well, I, I do believe that, that Juneteenth is a day to be recognized. It has been recognized by our federal government, this United States. I do believe that. I'm not against the Juneteenth holiday, but I'm trying to look at all aspects of it. It's what I tried to explain and what I, what I just stated and what I made my second on his motion about.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, not to grant this holiday. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor with not granting this holiday?
Aye.
And those that oppose?
Aye.
And the motion carries. So, we'll move on to item three, and that is a commission member representative appointment to the Appalachia Regional Planning Council. And to make this quick, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to nominate Commissioner Brown to sit on the Appalachia Regional Planning Council to represent the city of Carrabelle. Okay, and for discussion, I've sat on that board for five or six years off and on over my tenure. When Commissioner Brown was sitting on the CRA board, I invited her to attend one of those meetings with me. She did, she's had, so she's had a brief exposure. Their next meeting is Jan... exposure, their next meeting is January the 19th, I hope they can get you scheduled in for that, they've already sent out their announcements, they're not meeting where we went, they got a new office in Tallahassee, they're meeting in Tallahassee, these meetings are open to the public, I can go and attend anytime, any of us here on this board can attend, staff, a lot of the staff attend from the nine-county region, so that motion is by myself, seconded by Commissioner Melander for Commissioner Brown to represent the city on the Appalachia Regional Planning Council, and that is under the direction of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, because they pay part of our fee, they pay our fee, their fee includes these two cities to be represented, so they call the shots. All right, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries, there's no old business, and so, we're adjourned.